I haven't had an email since June 19th until today.
My car is falling.
Major soul to revenge.
We should have my car two weeks ago. And they called with my car. I have it as brandy.
Ransomware. So tickets tonight? Hey Dave.
Good evening. First, I'd like to apologize. We had a slight delay. It's not often that we sell out. So when we sell out, it takes a minute or two. I would like to welcome everyone to tonight's July 16th, 2024 City Council meeting. I would like to ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll recognize Councilmember DeWanna Bigelow for tonight's invocation.
Please bow. Thank you, Lord, for another opportunity to bow in your presence. As we begin tonight's meeting, we ask for your guidance, patience, and discernment. Help us to render decisions that reflect your plans for our community. We thank you for each family represented in our chambers tonight. Help us to lead with love and compassion. This is my prayer by faith, and I count it done. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. At this time, I would like to take a moment in remembrance of City employee Glenn Blake. Glenn was a retired City Burlington employee who recently passed away. Glenn was the age of 70 and passed away on Friday, July 12th. He was the husband of 37 years to retired City of Burlington perilegal Judy Blake. He was the brother-in-law to current city employee, Mel room clerk Ricky Westbrooks. Glenn retired from the U.S. Navy after 20 years of service and worked for the City of Burlington for 26 years as grounds crew leader in our cemetery and grounds division. He worked tirelessly to be sure that all of our grounds and city parks, cemeteries, and greenways, and medians were always meticulously kept up to a level that met the highest expectations, his expectations. He was a mentor to numerous fellow colleagues and was known for looking forward to leaf season, doing that job meticulously, and was planning to return to work at the city part-time in the fall to aid in the workload that we endured during that period. Our city family, the City of Burlington family, gives our most sincere sympathies and condolences to the Blake family, their friends, and the colleagues of Glenn. City is extremely grateful for his dedicated service to Burlington, and he will be missed greatly. Please join me in a moment of silence in remembrance of city employee Glenn Blake. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to recognitions on our agenda. First recognition Burlington Animal Services Best Friends Animal Society Award for 2023 Pet Life Saving Achievement. I'd like to recognize our Animal Services Director Jess Arias. And from the Pet Adoption and Welfare Society, or PAWS, Vicki Hunt is with us, their chairperson. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and fellow community members. It's with great pride and gratitude that I stand before you today to recognize Burlington Animal Services for the prestigious No Kill 2023 Award from Best Friends Animal Society. This award is a testament to our unwavering commitment to the welfare of animals in our community and highlights the remarkable efforts of our dedicated team, volunteers, and partners. Over the last 10 years, Burlington Animal Services has made significant strides in increasing life-saving efforts, improving shelter operations, and enhancing community outreach. This achievement would not have been possible without the collective hard work and compassion of our staff, volunteers, and community partners. They go above and beyond every day to support positive outcomes for pets and people in our community. Our journey to achieving and maintaining a 90% or greater pet life-saving rate for the last six consecutive years has been challenging and also incredibly rewarding. We've implemented innovative programming that has not only saved lives but have also strengthened the bond with the community that we serve. I'd like to extend a heartfelt thank you to you, the Burlington City Council, for your continuous support and belief in our mission. Your commitment to providing the necessary resources and fostering a collaborative environment has been instrumental in our success. I also want to acknowledge and thank PAWS, our volunteers, and other community partners whose generosity and dedication have been invaluable. Their contributions have played a crucial role in our success. Recognition of this award is not just a milestone for Burlington Animal Services, but for the entire City of Burlington and Alamance County community. It reflects our community's unity and compassion for pets and the value they bring to our lives. Thank you for your support, and let us continue working together to sustain Burlington Animal Services, a leading agency in our state.
I'm Vicki Hunt of PAWS, and I want to say something that Jess did not say. This 90% live release rate is almost unheard of for a public open access shelter, and it's just a monumental achievement. The Burlington City Council was PAWS' first ask in the quest to reduce the high euthanasia, low adoption rates of homeless animals. Then the Alamance County Commissioners and all the municipalities in our county, everyone got on board. It's been a wonderful partnership over the last 20 years, governments, the people, and the great BAS staff led by Jess. Together, all of us have had a part in turning a horrible situation into something we can all be so proud of. On behalf of the PAWS Board, thank you for your continued support and for the way you care about good outcomes for homeless animals. Thank you.
Program that Jess leads, certainly with our Burlington Animal Services, is a testimony to what private-public partnerships it should be. So thanks to PAWS and for everything that your organization does to assist us with our outcomes. Thank you, and thank you, Jess. Our next item this evening is our Eagle Scout Awards. This is an annual event for us that we look forward to. So at this time, I'd like to recognize Alamance District Executive for Boy Scouts of America, Kirby Dunn. Kirby, welcome. And I would last like to ask City Council members to please proceed forward down front as we recognize these individuals that have earned their awards. And tonight, and I know it's near and dear to his heart, we've got Representative Steve Ross with us. Representative Ross, I'm west that you come up with us as well, if you don't mind.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council members, very much for all of this. Representative Ross, this is an honor for us to come and to be here and for you guys to do this each year. All of you have been very big supporters of the Boy Scouts of America and everything that we do in the community. So thank you. We'd like to start off by recognizing Stephen Barnwell, Jr. He is a member of Troop 39 in the Alamance District of the Boy Scouts of America, and for his community service project, he worked on the retaining wall at the Village Golf Course. Jared Church is a member of Troop 4001 in the Alamance District of the Boy Scouts of America, and for his community service project, he worked on an outdoor classroom of beautification and maintenance for Grove Park Elementary. Let me fix that. That was Clover Garden Elementary. I'm sorry about that.
It's close.
Close. Ryan Marvin is a member of Troop 4039 out of the Alamance District of the Boy Scouts of America, and for his community service project, he worked on a gazebo for the Gibsonville Christian Church. Jonathan Thomas is a member of Troop 4039 out of the Alamance District for the Boy Scouts of America, and for his community service project, he worked on Helping Hands at Feeding Justice Center, at the Family Justice Center. I believe that is it.
Okay. Can we get everybody together? Yeah, Morgan, you want to help orchestrate? Get some pine fish.
And just like that, we lose our sellout crowd?
Could need to give them concessions too, I'm pretty.
That's right. Okay. Thanks, everyone, for your patience. Moving to the next item on our agenda, there's a special announcement and recognition. So at this time, I would like to recognize City Manager Craig Honeycutt for a special announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It's an honor and privilege this evening to recognize the dedicated service of Assistant City Manager Nolan Kirkman, who's the Assistant City Manager for Development Services. Nolan has officially announced his upcoming retirement from the city as of August 1st, 2024, so this is his last meeting. Nolan has dedicated 52 years, oh, excuse me, 32.
You're saying he's first to turn?
I got that confused all the time. But 32 years to public service with lifelong career at the City of Burlington. He has been a trusted and valuable leader, steadfast through impressive hours of work, and has invested many hours leading significant city projects that has supported the betterment of the City of Burlington. We thank you so much for his service to the city, and we wanted to take this time to wish him our best and our thanks, our appreciation, and thanks for the friendship. At this time, I'd like to invite our special guest, North Carolina House Representative and former Burlington City, or Mayor, Steve Ross and Nolan to come up for a special presentation. Nolan also has his family in attendance for the evening, his wife Emily, and daughter Shay, Haley, and Brooke. We thank y'all as well for your support, your dad during his time here.
Hey, Nolan, hands out of the pockets, man.
It's a real privilege to be here tonight, and before I get started, I just want to say I miss you guys. It's been, it's been a while since I've seen some of you, but I think most of you were here when I was, and you're doing a great job. And if I have, can have one more moment of special privilege here, I think they're gone now, but I just want to tell you that what they're doing with the animal shelter and their, the 90% success rate that they're having, it's actually higher than that, is something this city really, really should be proud of because in Raleigh, I hear the horror stories from all around the state. This is really beginning to become a topic, and you guys, in fact, the last time I had a, one of the national groups in my office, they mentioned Burlington as a poster child that they'd like to see all over the state. So I just want to thank you for that. Nolan, I was here, I was here when you were hired. Yeah, I've been around a little while. And I remember when you were hired, they said, we got a guy coming in, a little DOT background, and he's going to revolutionize our traffic system. And I'd kind of heard that thing before. But Nolan came in, hit the ground running, and came up with plans and changes and started to work on our system here and revolutionized the whole system and then kept going. And, you know, I was always impressed with the work that he did. One of the hardest-working individuals that I've seen come through, and where I run into him now is over at Harris Teeter, and just about every time I go in there. But, you know, over the years, I always tell him, I said, I got you topped. I have four daughters. We talk about our girls a lot, you know? So I've got something here that I'd like to give you that I don't think you know about, but this is a, this is something that is not given out lightly, and I just want to give it to you and thank you again for the work that you've done. I mean, he's, over the years, he's done many positions, and as the manager just said, he's Assistant City Manager now, and well-deserved, you know, the dedication of work that you've done. But this is something that comes from Raleigh. I'm going to read it, and then we'll unveil it. This is State of North Carolina, Roy Cooper Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Nolan P. Kirkman. I do by these presents confer the order of the long-leaf pine with the rank of Ambassador Extraordinary, privileged to enjoy the, enjoy fully all the rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege being able to propose the following North Carolina toast and select company anywhere in free world. Here's to the land of the long-leaf pine, the summerland where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State. And I think that when they say, or when it says in here, integrity, learning, and zeal, that is probably the best description of you I could think of. So, trying to hide this.
Nolan, would you like to take the microphone, say a few words since you now have the platform?
Yes, I would. Thank you. I appreciate that. Just, just thank, this is, this means a lot. I appreciate it. Means a lot.
As it should.
Yeah. My family's here. Sorry about that. I think, you know, the staff here, they realize it's a lot of work, and a lot of times it goes unnoticed, and, but I know that our family has, you know, they've been there to support me, we've had great leadership over the years, and so I just really appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'll tell one quick story. One of the first roles I had with the city was an appointment to the Traffic Commission, and Nolan was our city liaison to the Traffic Commission, and I served on the Traffic Commission for seven years. But my first year, everybody would come and speak to us and tell us what they were looking for with traffic, and then Nolan would give the city's position, and he would always say, the MUTCD manual says that we do not use stop signs to control speed, they're to establish right-of-way. Am I right? So one night, I went up to him and I said, Nolan, if we're going to always go to the MUTCD manual, what do you need us for? He said, I've been wondering the same thing. I might be joking about that a little bit, but we go way back, and Nolan, I want to tell you from the bottom of my heart, I love you and appreciate everything you've done for this city. You've been a great colleague and mentor, but a better friend. Our next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics, disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Mister Council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Done. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of minutes, May 21st, 2024 City Council meeting, June 3rd, 2024 Work Session, June 4th, 2024 City Council meeting, and June 18th, 2024 City Council. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on those minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is the request for additions to the consent agenda. Item O is a resolution to set a date of public hearing for voluntary contiguous annexation of 1442 NC Highway 61 South, and item P is appointments to City Council Advisory Boards and Commissions. These were reviewed last evening. Is there a motion for the request for the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion to add the, those items to the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item this evening is the adoption of the agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the agenda with the additions as stated.
So moved.
Have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Moving into our consent agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone on council has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to approve the reclassification of 1 Vacant Solid Waste Worker 2, Level 202, position to a Parks Solid Waste Maintenance Position Level 202, effective upon City Council approval. Item B, to adopt a resolution and authorize the purchasing manager to process the sale of 1 2008 Freightliner with Peterson Boom Loader through govdeals.com to the highest bidder pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 168-270. Item C, to adopt proposed amendments to the City of Burlington purchasing federal policies and procedures in compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Item D, to approve and accept the offers from the North Carolina Department of Transportation, or NCDOT, for impacts due to Project U-6040 for impacts to city-owned parcels 139641 and 139644, and to authorize the mayor to sign deeds for right-of-way and easement and right-of-entry agreements on said parcels. E, to approve budget amendment 2025-01, and to approve the bank financing agreement with Bank of America. Bank of America, the banking resolutions, and authorize the mayor, city manager, and chief financial officer, and the city clerk to sign and execute the bank's loan documents. F, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-02 for the allocation of funds donated to the Burlington Fire Department for a travel reimbursement by Guilford County Fire Rescue Company. G, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-03 to allow the Planning Department to allocate funds for a settlement agreement with DKL Investment Solutions to bring properties located at 1720 and 1724 Blackwell Street into compliance with the city's unified development ordinance. H, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-04 and approve the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Grant Agreement for the Police Department to purchase two motorcycles utilizing the controlled substance funds and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute the resolution and agreement through North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Grant. I, to approve Budget Amendment 25-05 for Recreation and Parks to purchase a Ford F-250 Crew Cab truck using the North Carolina State Contract 2510A for fleet vehicles. J, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-06 to allow Recreation and Parks to accept State Office of Budget Management funds for design and construction of the Paramount Theater expansion, $500,000, and for features at the accessible playground at City Park, $100,000. K, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-07 for Recreation and Parks to accept grant funds from Impact Aliments to be carried forward into the FY 2425 year for Silo Fossett Community Garden at North Park. L, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-08 for Recreation and Parks to carry forward the National Recreation and Parks Association Grant Balance and accept additional grant monies to support the King Academy. M, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-09 for Recreation and Parks to accept funds from Wynn Today Richardson Family Foundation Grant that supports applicants for scholarships in youth athletic programs. N, to approve Budget Amendment 2025-10 for physical year 2023-2024 capital projects, equipment carried forward. O, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for the August 20th, 2024, City Council meeting to consider a voluntary contiguous annexation request of 1442 NC Highway 61 South consisting of 11 parcels of land totaling 196.43 acres, including the following Guilford County parcels with tax identification numbers 106949, 106961, 106966, 106967, 106968, 106970, 106973, 106976, 106977, 225491, and 225492. P, to make the following appointments to the City of Burlington's Advisory Boards and Commissions effective upon City Council approval. These are spelled out in your, in your agenda. There is one administrative note I would like to make note of under Board of Adjustments. The appointment of Mark Kennedy, Steve Heinemann, Kathy Holland, and Chandler Woods represents 1, 2, 3, and 4 on the board and Eric Grant was listed as an alternate. So I just want to be sure that that administrative note for the alternate is notated in there. At this time, we'll entertain a motion in a second to approve, to approve the consent agenda as written.
So moved.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next this evening, we move into public hearings. A public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider adopting a resolution calling for a bond referendum, ordering, authorizing $47 million for parks and recreation bonds and $21,500,000 for street and sidewalk improvement bonds. I would like to make just one brief comment before we turn this over to Peggy and open the floor for public comments. This is an agenda item. There were some individuals that signed up to speak on the bond referendum during, during public comments, so I would ask respectfully that you speak during the public hearing for the bond and that would be Devon Allison, I believe, Teresa Meben, and I think there is one more, Erin Nettles. So if those individuals could speak during the public hearing for this, it would be in compliance with our ordinance on public comments. At this time, I'd like to recognize our chief financial officer, Peggy Reese.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to be here before you tonight. This is the next step in the bond, GO bond referendum process. As a reminder, this is a public hearing and so I felt it would be good to have Davenport, Mitch Bergulio from Davenport, our financial advisors, to speak on the key debt ratios. And before he starts, I want to, just as a reminder for the public, that there are two bonds on the public hearing that you will be hearing tonight. We're doing them both at the same time. One is our Parks and Recreation Bond that covers $6 million for the Maynard Aquatic Center pool structure, $11 million for the Paramount Theater, and $30 million for Western Sportsplex, for a total of $47 million for the Parks and Recreation Bond. Then we have a Street and Sidewalks Bond that's $15 million for resurfacing streets, $1 million five for repairing and installing new sidewalks, and $5 million for downtown streetscaping, for a total of $21.5 million. And now I will turn it over to Mitch.
Thank you, Peggy. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me this evening. As Ms. Reese said, just wanted to provide just a brief refresher and background on some of the analysis that was done as part of this referendum and was presented to you all previously by my colleague Ted Cole. As part of the analysis of the referendum, a number of scenarios were analyzed and as part of analyzing those scenarios, one of the key elements that we reviewed was the city's debt capacity and taking on, potentially taking on, this new general obligation bond debt if approved by the voters. And so when analyzing the city's debt capacity, we typically review a series of key debt ratios, ways to evaluate the city's debt load outstanding, both before and after the referendum, if it's approved, and compare that to other similar cities around the state for perspective. The first key debt ratio that we look at is referred to as the 10-year payout ratio. This is a measure of the percentage of your debt outstanding, or the percentage of the principal to be repaid that is currently outstanding, and how much of that are you paying down in the first 10 years? This is a measure to ensure that if you are issuing debt, that you're repaying it in a responsible fashion so that you create capacity in the future, that you're not deferring your debt payments just to reduce the annual cost to the city and then the bill becomes due later on. So when we evaluated the city's proposed payout ratio following the potential issuance of the general obligation bonds, the minimum this 10-year payout ratio gets to is just over 50%. And for perspective, typical policy targets ranges for this ratio are a minimum of 50 to 55, 60%. So higher is better on this ratio. We look at sort of a minimum of 50% is the typical range and you stay above that even after the issuance of these GO bonds. Looking at other similarly rated cities and towns around the state, we looked at other double A rated and triple A rated cities and towns around the state, the highest rating you can have is triple A. So that's the highest rating level and the second highest rating level that we evaluated. The average payout ratio between double A and triple A's ranges from 70% to 90%. That's kind of the average, but the range of double and triple A rated cities ranges from just over 55% up to 100%. And so you're, you're within the range of other rated cities and towns even after taking on the proposed general obligation bonds if approved. So under this ratio, the city would have capacity in the future. The second key ratio that we look at is your, your tax-supported debt outstanding as a percentage of your assessed value. By statute, cities and towns are limited to a maximum of 8% general obligation bond debt as a percentage of assessed value, which is, you know, your tax base, your, the overall valuation of the city. Realistically, from a, from a lending and marketing perspective, you wouldn't issue up to 8%. It would be hard to market that debt if you were to be up around the 8%. Typically, we see policy maximums, lower is better for this ratio. Typically, we see policy maximums in the 2% to 3% range. Currently, the city is sitting at around 0.2% debt to assessed value. After the issuance of the proposed general obligation bond debt, we're estimating the city will still remain below 1%, which is well below that maximum typically targeted policy range. Looking at similarly rated double A and triple A cities, ranges from about 0.5% to 0.7% on average. So you stay right similar to that average range and when we look at sort of the overall range of double and triple A rated cities and towns, as low as just over 0% up to around 2.6%. So, you know, you're well within the grouping there on this ratio. We would say you have the debt capacity under this ratio to issue these general obligation bonds and/or consider additional debt in the future if you chose to do so. The last key debt ratio that we typically look at is debt service as a percentage of your expenditures. What is your annual debt payment as a percentage of your annual ongoing budget? When doing this calculation, we don't include one-time expenses like capital expenses that could inflate your annual budget. It's really a measure of your annual fixed debt payments as a percentage of your overall outflows for the year. Typical policy ranges or targets for, for this ratio are in the 15% to 20% range and right now, the city is sitting at around 5%. Projected to get up to around, just under 12%, between 11% and 12% after the proposed GO bonds if they were to be approved and issued. So, you know, well below that range, typical policy target range. And when we look at the medians for other double and triple A rated cities, the averages range between 7% and 12%. So you stay within that metric for the average double and triple A rated cities and we look, when we look at the minimums and the maximums, again, somebody's close to 0% but also up north of 22% on the high end. So again, well within that overall range. Taken as a whole, the city has, under these ratios, minimal debt outstanding currently. You have capacity and through this analysis, in our opinion, there is the capacity to take on this level of GO bonds, of additional debt if approved, and could consider under several of these ratios, additional debt in the future if desired. When measuring these ratios, we try to be conservative, so conservative interest rates. Hopefully, we do better than that in the future, which would improve these ratios, as well as conservative growth projections for assessed value and debt service to expenditures. We try to estimate on the conservative side so that you can outperform only increasing the capacity in the future. No guarantees of that, obviously, but we do try to be conservative in the estimates. One last thing that I've mentioned, this is the measure of debt capacity, right? These are your, your key debt ratios and I typically compare this to our personal lives going out for a mortgage. This would be like going to a bank and getting pre-qualified for a mortgage. They would look at our financials, they would pre-qualify us for a mortgage and then it's up to us to determine the other aspects such as affordability, which has also been measured in this case and as you all know and will be on the ballot, the impact, if both GO bonds are approved, the estimated affordability would be the 5.7 cent on the tax rate equivalent to fund the debt service on these GO bonds. So that's kind of the two aspects that we've looked at in this analysis, the debt capacity under these ratios and the debt affordability, which will be part of that GO bond balance. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mitch or Peggy? Thank you.
Thank you all.
One thing I would like to add is that, that 8% maximum for the City of Burlington is $483 million.
And just as a sidebar to that, what is our outstanding now, Peggy? It's 11.8 million. And that goes away in '26?
500,000 of it goes away in '26.
Okay.
Of the annual debt payment.
Correct. Okay, any other questions for Peggy or anybody? All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments on the bond referendum proposal. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this subject? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this subject? Please come forward. State your name for the city clerk.
Ladies and Mayor and Council, it's nice to be back. Erin Nettles, 525 Country Club Drive, Burlington.
Good to see you, Erin. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I come to you tonight not as a representative of the downtown, but as a concerned citizen. I have tried to follow all of the council meetings, all of the work sessions regarding the bond and I still have questions and I've tried hard to keep up with everything, so I know that the community has a lot of questions about this. I know there are two key parts to this and there's been an advocate for it and educating about it and I'm concerned about the education piece and I just really want to express how important that's going to be to get these bonds approved. These are huge numbers, kind of shocking to people that don't deal with budgets of this size on a regular basis. We're coming off of a year of revaluation on properties where our properties just went up significantly, at least I feel that way, and I think my question is, how do we communicate, excuse me, how do you communicate that to the public? What does that do on a daily or a monthly or average budget for somebody that is still trying to figure out how to recover from, you know, my personal bills went up $500 between my homeowner's insurance and my property tax? It just feels like the timing is going to be difficult to sell that to the public. I'm not opposed to the bonds. I'm not necessarily in favor of them. I'm in favor of the projects. They are wonderful projects. I appreciate all of your time and interest that you've invested in those. There's been a lot of city time that has gone into those, my time as well, and I really want to see these projects happen. So I come to you tonight to express the importance of making sure we communicate that to the public. We have 15 weeks from today for Election Day and as a government employee for two past years, I see that the wheels on the government move much slower than in a private entity and 15 weeks can go by in 15 days in the government. I want us to be, excuse me, I want the city to be as aggressive as possible in making sure that we're communicating these important things to the public. Make sure I didn't miss anything. Some of the questions that I have after reading, I've been reviewing the website, I know that that's still a work in progress. I watched the work session last night where there's a PowerPoint presentation. Can the city create a toolkit that they put on the website that any community member can access? Can they download that presentation to take it to their community groups, their churches, whatever groups they're in front of to help communicate that information? Can we have QR codes on signs that you can scan from your car while you're sitting at a stoplight? Can we really think outside of the box and create everything we can, every opportunity we can, to educate the public because if they're not... Because if they're not understanding what this is, they're not going to be on board to vote in favor of these bonds. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this side would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Devon Allison, and I'm opposed to the street and sidewalk improvement bond because I live on the east side of Burlington, and we don't have any sidewalks. We have a strip of a sidewalk on Apple Street, maybe from Ebenezer Church to Joe Shopwell. Then, we got a strip on Sharp Road on one side of the street. Then, we may have another strip of sidewalks on Rawwood Street. So, my question is, $21 million for street and sidewalk improvement, is that coming to East Burlington? Because I'm not going, I mean, our taxes just went up. I don't see myself paying for someone else if I'm not going to be able to benefit from that. So, I just want to know, the street and sidewalk improvements, is East Burlington a part of that?
I should respect them today. We all should. I don't know, I haven't.
Because I just don't think it's fair that West Burlington has sidewalks, but East Burlington doesn't have any sidewalks. And I know that you all know that on the city council. I know that you all know that. We do not have any sidewalks. Even my neighbors that are here with support, they can tell you. People from the apartments who have children, they have to push their children in a stroller out in the street. That's dangerous. We don't have any sidewalks. East Burlington, we do not have any sidewalks. $21 million? Don't leave us out. That's not fair. And then, our taxes will go up again? Who can afford that? Who can afford that for this town? This is a small town. Come on. Come on, work with us. Be fair. You got to think about stuff like that.
Allison, it sounds like you want to know exactly what the improvements are, where they're going to be at.
Yeah, for the, for street and sidewalk. We just had the streets done, but nobody has come back and put lines on the street. We had the streets repaved maybe three or four months ago. No one has come back out to put the lines in the street. And then, on Beaumont Avenue, they've torn down all that, those woods. You usually see a sign that Cookout is coming, Bank of America is coming, a new development. But on Beaumont Avenue, there's nothing out there. So, everybody is like, well, what's going there? What are they building there? It's like, we're just there. Like, I feel like you don't care. Not you personally, but I'm just saying, that's just how I feel.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
Philip Keller, 411 Carnotl Drive. Good evening to Mr. Mayor and the city council members. I first want to thank the mayor, city council, and city managers for all the work that has been done to improve some of the pedestrian and cycling infrastructure in Burlington. I'm a teacher at Williams High School and Turntime Middle School, and I walk or bike to work, so I appreciate the most recent addition of a crosswalk and a sidewalk extension by Williams High School. My family, I often walk or cycle to get downtown, to get to the grocery store, the farmer's market in Elon, and other locations in town. So, anything that helps us get around on foot or by bike is really important to our life in Burlington. Similarly to what was just said, I'm glad to see the $21.5 million bond proposal is for street and sidewalk improvement, but I was disappointed a minute ago here, only 1.5 million out of that is just, is actually going to sidewalks. I personally would like to see a much more given for the pedestrian infrastructure. In my opinion, this could really be an opportunity to embrace and further the pedestrian plan and the bikeways plan. Particularly with the bikeways plan, I want to emphasize the importance of bike routes that are separated from the road or protected from cars, like the path that runs along Front Street towards Elon. I have students tell me they wish they could cycle to school, but they do not feel safe on our roads, and protected bike lanes are always safer. With the pedestrian plan, like we just said, simply connecting sidewalks to each other is a great start, and it's going to take more than 1.5 million out of that to really fully do that, to complete these plans. On my way here, for example, there's a crosswalk across Front Street that ends at nothing. And I've seen students walking up to Turntime and have to get in the street at that point. The plan, the pedestrian plan calls for a sidewalk to be connected at some point, so my hope is that with this bond, this could be the chance to really see those sidewalks connected. I hope the pedestrian plan and the bikeways plan can be a guide in how to spend the money should this bond pass, and that the city council could commit to fulfilling both of those plans, the bikeways plan and the pedestrian plan. It would be great to see a timeline of when different phases of the plans will be complete, such as, we commit to a year from now, a certain percentage of the bikeways plan will be complete. The next year, another percentage will be complete. As the population of Burlington grows, the most important way to reduce car traffic is to provide other ways for people to get around. Investing in safe and effective and attractive cycling, walking, and transit infrastructure is the best investment for our future Burlington. And related to this, as we commit to furthering the bike plan and pedestrian plan, I believe Burlington needs a bike and pedestrian advisory committee, such as they have this in Greensboro, Durham, and even Meben, and other surrounding towns. I would like to serve my community by helping to form such a commission. I began an online Facebook group several months ago to discuss issues of walkability and livability in Burlington for people to put in what crosswalks don't connect anything, what places are unsafe with the speeds. And this online group currently has 147 members who are engaged in discussing these matters and finding ways to make Burlington more walkable and bikeable. There is enough interest and enough people would be willing to serve on this commission, and I would love to see, serve my community, help Burlington see the completion of the pedestrian plan and the bikeway plan. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Marley, and I live at 842 Sharp Road. Just to go back on what was already said, for the east side and sidewalks, we do know that it is in the plan for the two houses on Blackwell Street. So, there's no sidewalks there either, but we wanted to make sure that there was going to be sidewalks at that location as well. And also, here where.
And what address was that?
This is the 1720 and 1724 Blackwell Street in Burlington.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And also, where it says about the parks and recreations, we are concerned about the North Park community. They're right across the street from there, and we are enjoying the swimming pool so far when we can get in there. We do have to make reservations to get there. I know that they started that during COVID. COVID has subsided some, so we was trying to see if we can maybe get a better way of trying to get into the pool because there are a lot of, summertime is here, you know, kids want to go swimming. It's been very hot, so we want to try and see if we can get a better way of getting into the swimming pool. And also, as far as the recreation park over there, are there any plans to build up that community as well?
Thank you. Welcome in.
Good evening.
Don't talk all night, you're going to be on the timer.
Ah, you know I'm a short person. Tall in stature, shortened speech. Good evening, esteemed members of the Burlington City Council and my fellow tax-paying comrades. I come here today to discuss a fiscal debacle that would make even a drunken pirate blush, the proposed general obligation bond. Now, I'm no financial wizard, but even I can see that throwing this kind of money around without a proper plan is like giving a toddler a flamethrower and hoping for the best. You see, folks, what the city council is proposing is the fiscal equivalent of blindfolded darts, with your hard-earned tax dollars as the darts and the city's future as the dartboard. First off, let's address the elephant in the room. There's no capital improvement plan. CIP, for those of you who don't speak municipal acronyms, without one, it's like trying to bake a cake without a recipe. You may end up with something that's edible, but it's probably going to look like a five-year-old made it. A CIP is a roadmap to the city's future, outlining our infrastructure and how we're going to pay for it. Without it, we'll just be throwing money around willy-nilly, hoping for the best. Take a look at our neighbors in Meben and Alamance County. They both have CIPs. A CIP isn't just good government, it's a fiscally responsible government. Now, I understand that some of you might be thinking, but Ian, these bond projects sound pretty good. We need new roads. We need to fix the crumbling Mard Aquatic Center, and who doesn't love a freshly paved parking lot? But let me ask you this, do we really want to be a city that goes bankrupt because we spend all of our money on shiny new things without thinking about the long-term consequences? This bond will increase our taxes a gosh darn lot. In adding insult to injury, we'll be paying for these projects long after some of them have crumbled. Plus, it will prevent us from using this bond tool for future more pressing needs. It's like using your emergency parachute to jump off the swing set. It might be fun in the moment, but you're really going to regret it later. Now, I'm not saying we shouldn't invest in our city, we absolutely should. We need safe sidewalks, we need expanded space for arts and culture, and we need a new recreation center. But we need to do it the right way. We need a CIP that outlines our needs for the next 10 years, prioritizes projects, and gives us a clear pathway to paying for them. We need a CIP that involves the public so we can have a say in how our tax dollars are spent. This bond is a short-sighted solution to a long-term problem, a Band-Aid on a bullet wound, and frankly, it's an insult to the intelligence of the people of Burlington. So, here's my plea to you, the city council, let's hit the brakes on this bond. Take a deep breath and start working on a CIP that will truly benefit all of us. Let's show the rest of the state what good government looks like. Let's show them that the city of Burlington is a city that plans for our future, not a city that reacts to the present. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Butler and council members. My name's Teresa Wiley, reside at 1010 Richmond Avenue. I'm coming to speak on the bond referendum as well. There's two points that I just want to bring up, just to piggyback a little bit. One is about the transparency. So, when we think about the increase of the taxes that will come with the bond referendum, have we thought about what is the transparency plan that we have for addressing the housing issue? So, currently, we know that the increase in taxes right now has really pushed a lot of our Alamance County and our City of Burlington residents into eviction court. And as a nurse and a care manager, we are struggling to find affordable housing. So, with the increases of taxes, what is the transparency plan for our homeless and our housing plan, which I think we currently don't have one? The second piece is, I know it's been requested in previous meetings, the outcome of the traffic study. So, what has the traffic study shown us for priority of where we're going to approach the sidewalks and the repair of the streets? Do we know where those priority areas are, and do we know that it is an equitable plan for both east side, west side, north and south of Alamance? I think it is very fair that the city residents here see that before having to be put on the ballot to vote for something. Transparency is key. And I just ask that with this bond referendum, that we are really clear around making sure that it is equitable and that the data is strategic and is driving our decisions.
Anyone else on this side would like to speak on this item? Mr. Bunny, are you requesting a moment?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. You're going to be on a timer too.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mayor and council members, I'd first give you each a letter that outlines probably in order detail the comments that I did want to make tonight. I'm very concerned that the city needs to be very careful not to be advocating for the bond. The state law, and a very important state law too, has made very clear that the limitations for a government entity, in y'all's case, obviously the city, in previous cases locally, a lot of times it was the school board, is not to take an advocacy position. Last night during your meeting, you're very careful, most of your city employees are very careful to use the term educational or informational. And that's fine, and that's the way it's supposed to be, but I have to question, Mayor and council, whether the actual content of what the city's website has, for instance, is neutral. Neutral is what it's supposed to be. Balanced is what it's supposed to be. Instead, I find we start with frequently asked question number nine, what happens if the bonds don't pass? According to the website, if one or both bond referendums questions are not approved by voters in November, projects will be delayed or canceled. City leadership can also look for alternative, more expensive ways to finance projects. Mr. Mayor and councilman, that is absolutely unnecessary. Entirely missing from the council's recitation of potential consequences is the potential that proposed projects could be revised or scaled back. Instead, the only two choices are delayed or canceled. It's a straw man, and it's inflammatory and also inaccurate to say that there are only more expensive ways to finance projects. I have quoted to you a number of times in both the letter and in the supplemental material, court cases that indicate that you're not supposed to indicate dire consequences of a failure for passing a bond referendum. Former U.S. Supreme Court Justice William Brennan, when he was a New Jersey Supreme Court Justice, used the term that they're not supposed to be overdramatized. I would suggest that that description in particular is very overdramatized. There's also no context to the, to the, some of the figures that are listed. The 5.7 cent property tax rate increase is acknowledged, and that's a good thing. What's missing is any sort of context of what that represents, which is an 11.79% increase in the city's tax rate. And as some citizens have already alluded to, that's a fair amount, and in particular, on top of the 18% increase they've already suffered last year as a result of not adopting the revenue mutual tax rate in Burlington. So, Mr. Mayor, those are a quick summary of my concerns, outlined in greater detail in the letter and in the examination of the city's website. I would urge the city to be very cautious to comply with these standards, else you're going to run very afoul of state office.
Totally noted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion as our second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The public hearing is now closed. Couple of items in, listening to some of the comments and a couple of items, I think that from a educational standpoint, the city is still working on toolkits, Miss Nuzz, and things that we're to lay out. I think they're working with our city attorney to be sure that everything that we're doing is in full compliance with the law, but at the same time, educational, because education in this case can mean lots of things. For instance, what is the timeline we have to execute the bond should it pass?
Seven years.
Seven years. So there could be seven years before a project's even started. It could not be started at all. That's education. So those are some of the things that I think are in reference here, is there's a lot of educational pieces that are, that are missing along the way, that we've got a lot of work to do on. A couple of comments on streets and sidewalks, I think, are extremely important. We've got a street paving plan based on a scoring system. Is that right, Nolan?
Right.
Maybe it'd be a good idea if we had that on the website somewhere, where the public can look at it, because east Burlington and west Burlington are no different, and I'll promise you, there are potholes in west Burlington, and there are no sidewalks in west Burlington, too. So there are plenty of places that have need, and it would be good if we could maybe put those on the website. We're very good at doing that, to help educate the public, but there's no Wizard of Oz, and we're certainly not hiding behind anything. Are there street sidewalks missing in east Burlington? Absolutely, without a doubt. That's correct. But you could also get run over, really easy going from Forest Dell Apartments to Walmart. And there's a walking path about 10 inches deep in the dirt that would prove it. So we have needs all over the city, and we have a sidewalk plan that is also, we could post, and it shows where our next sidewalks would be going, but for the fact that developers could help expedite that if areas are developed. So there are two pieces to the street and sidewalks, notwithstanding this bond piece. Those items, those, that plan is already in existence, so anybody can see it. Someone mentioned transparency, it's very transparent. We'll get it up there, so everybody can see it. I can't tell you the last time I could tell you when a road was paved. It's a plan, and we just follow the plan. Same with sidewalks. So I think that's extremely important. Next is, if we talk about planning, and have we researched this, and I do want to take just a moment, some of the items that are in this bond are streets, sidewalks, streetscaping, roads, those are evident needs, those are visual needs. Some of the other items, if you want to talk about planning and public input, I can show you seven studies, going back to 2012, that define a specific need. I can show you where a mayor and council, at a goal-setting session in 2016, prioritized some of these items, and I think that's extremely important. So if we want to debate planning, I'd love to sit down with anyone and debate planning for certain items, because there's a lot of planning that has been done. So whether those plans come to fruition or not are up to the voters, and how more transparent can we, can we be than that? So education is holistic, it is, it is on all things. Opinions are important, and opinions certainly structure the input of, input meetings. Those opinions matter, and we have decades' worth of data on that. So there's been an enormous amount of planning that has gone into this as well. So, and to Mr. Boni's comments, I could not agree more. We want to be forthright and let the, the public decide on this and educate. And I appreciate the challenge to be sure that we stay that way, and I would encourage city staff to work with our city attorney on anything that we're putting out there to be sure that it meets that criteria. That's all I have on this subject. Anybody else would like that?
If I could, on, on the sidewalks. One of the real challenges that we have in sidewalks and some of the older streets is simply right-of-way. When those streets were built years ago, in many parts of our community, they were Many of the homes that's built on those streets, the lots are not large, so the concept we gotta consider is, how far do you go into people's private property to expand to get sidewalks? The other concept is, is that if you don't, if you don't have curbing, guttering on some of these streets, like some of them do not, then that would be another situation you've gotta look at in terms of existing property to be able to fairly and safely implement this. This is not making an excuse, it's just, it's just, just the truth. It's been a while since I've dealt with this for a long time. It's, it's difficult. In some situations, retrofitting some of our older communities may be the toughest thing you have to do, because of just simply space, and public space in terms of the road, sidewalks, the ditches, stormwater, which is all these issues that we deal with now, all that comes into play. So I think that's a, that's a very valid point about the need for sidewalks and people to enjoy them. You know, walking is a great thing. Years ago, we created walking tracks all over the city. People gotta drive there to walk, I will say that, and that doesn't make, sometimes that makes a lot of sense, doesn't it? But the point I make is, is that between that, between a greenway system, which I think is important that we implement across the city, throughout the community, and determining where we can indeed expand areas where you can put sidewalks in residential communities, certainly it's gonna be something we need to look at. It can't happen overnight, but certainly something we ought to consider.
Any other comments from councilmen, or any questions for staff?
I'd like to make a comment. Over the years, you know, at budget time, I've all, I have been a long time advocate of keeping our streets up, and I'm still an advocate of that, simply because all, all of our citizens use our streets routinely. That's one thing we absolutely, we all use, and we need, and they need to be in good shape. And it's been probably what, what, 12, 13 years ago, we got a little...
Oh, six.
We got, we got behind, and we just had, the streets were in just, in bad, bad condition. And, and I, at that time, I, I made my mind that I was gonna advocate, you know, for keeping up the streets, and we have a scoring system, we, we try to keep up the streets. But I did want to put in, you know, my comments about, I think streets are important to all of us, and sidewalks are, too. And I'm, I'm, I'm a big advocate of sidewalks, and the other projects, the recreational projects, you know, have been identified, you know, on numerous occasions, and we've had retreats where we talked about priorities we're gonna give to the different projects. These things, you know, go back for some period of time, and finally, I'll just say this, is, is I think putting it to a bond issue, I know there will be some financial implication of that, and it always is, but that's the ultimate test, as to whether or not the citizens want it. If they come, you know, November the 5th and vote for it, you know, that's a clear indication that they're willing to make that sacrifice and to pay, you know, to pay what is necessary for the recreation of the streets and the sidewalks. So again, like I said, I think, I think it's, I think our job here, you know, particularly is to identify what's needed, you know, try to provide for it, and in those instances that you need a bond, that you call for a bond issue, and let the citizens decide. If the citizens decide, you know, that it's good, we'll, we'll use that money for the stated purpose. That, you know, I have something to say.
I think what the community here tonight is asking, for the most part, is just being transparent.
Yep.
Show us what you're doing, and at that point in time, we either vote for it or against it. All we want to do is see it. If we can do that, put it out on the web, put it out wherever everybody can see it, and it meets the goals of what we've said, they go along with it, they being the citizens of Burlington. I don't necessarily know where everyone is in east Burlington in reference to all the lack of sidewalks that we're speaking of, but I grew up on Salisbury Road, and we had sidewalks on McKinney Street forever and ever and ever when I was a kid, walking home from East Long Elementary School. We had sidewalks and nobody else had sidewalks, all the way up to McKinney Hill. So I know there's sidewalks there, and I know that something has been done, but let's be honest, it seems like to me that we're doing this, getting wider and wider apart from one another. So the transparency is gonna help do what we need for it to do, if we do our job and do what we're supposed to. Then you have a clear picture, and it's either a yes or a no. That's the way I see it.
And the other thing, too, is, is the way the city has grown, and some of that reason is based on, on other communities. If you go east, for example, along North Church Street, you're not gonna win anymore, to be honest, 'cause you guess what you're up against? You're against, you're against Hall River. The growth of the community has been now to the north, to the south, to the west. As I'm often told, there's not an indoor recreation center west of City Park. And how far does the corporate limits now go west? So a lot of this has occurred because of change in terms of the way the community has grown, and you're trying to provide services throughout. The two recreation centers that's located in east Burlington was built, if I'm not mistaken, I was very young, in 1979 and 1981. I think North Park was built first, and Fairchild was built two years later, in east Burlington. Since then, honestly, I don't think there's been a, there's not been a ton of construction such as that. Most of the construction's been more in the open space in terms of the larger parks and things of that nature. So it's, it's, it's a, it's a big-picture thing that we'd have to take a look at, trying to provide opportunities for all of our citizens.
I, I think you're right, but what I've heard tonight is, don't forget about us.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
And I think that they're the same concerns that we spoke about prior to us going forward with the bond. I had the same concerns that most of the residents are speaking of tonight, so I understand where you're coming from. I'm still learning. We just asked last night, I just asked last night, for more transparency. Like, how does this 5.7 affect our actual dollar amount, the bottom dollar for my house? And I think you guys want to know the same thing. So...
Yep.
The tool can be very helpful. I think we also mentioned that last night. I mentioned about, how can we break this thing down? We've done excellent with the Western Electric project. Everybody got on board, everybody understood, the language was clear, and I also believe it needs more clarity.
Any other council comments? If not, at this time, we will entertain a motion on the request for consideration.
Mayor, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution calling for a bond referendum order authorizing $47 million for parks and recreation bonds and $21.5 million for street and sidewalk improvement bonds.
Thank you. We have a motion for, calling for the adoption. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion's carried, and I do appreciate everyone speaking during public comments. We will get that information on our website, so that you can have it, and please reach out to city hall if there's anything else you'd like to see there, and we'll see that it's put up. Morgan's done a great job at getting information up there on a myriad of things that we're working on, and we want to continue that. So thank you. Item number two: a public hearing has been scheduled to receive public comments on the 2024 through 2028 consolidated plan and 2024-2025 annual action plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, or CDBG. At this time, I'll recognize from PTRC Michael Blair. Mr. Blair, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm gonna see if I can pull this up myself for the first time, so I believe I can. There we go. The reason we're doing this, because we did this again on, on May 7th, is, what happened is, the federal allocation for CDBG and all the federal grants came out on May 7th. We did not get all of the documents changed, and if, even if we had, HUD would have said, "You have to do another public hearing and 30-day comment period for your consolidated plan and annual action plan," in order, because of the late announcement of the CDBG funds. So again, we have a slide here, and we were asked during the work session to try to show the difference between, we lost $12,000 basically, is the difference in the last year's grant and this year's grant. Hang on, let me see if I can get this, oh, slideshow, there we go. All right. So here we have it. What we used on the right side was basically last year's funding, because again, the grant had not been announced, so we just, typical practices, use the prior year's funding. But it came out, we started with $476.76, we ended up getting $458.352. The changes basically are on the right side of the work session table. The grant changed by $12,000, $324. Admin went down, $24.65, that's, admin's 20% of the current year's amount for administration. If it goes down, the admin goes down.
Right.
Public services, we made an effort to keep it the exact same amount. So we, we managed to keep that, that's an all, $70,601. Rehab went down a little bit, $6,800. Infrastructure, $3,010. And then the total, all together with, with program income, previous grant funds that had not been used or have been given back, totaled $12,324 less than the current, the work session that we had, and council meeting that we had, May 7th. So, and, and what we said when we had that meeting is, it's not gonna change what you just approved very much, and we were right. And because this is a consolidated plan and any plan, public hearing, I'm not going to go through everything like I did last time, but I can say it was a good process. We had a lot of comments made, the survey had, you know, over 100 responses to it, we had three very well-attended public meetings, we have a number of different projects that we hadn't done in previous years that we're doing because of these meetings. Nolan had a great idea, actually, about putting $100,000 aside for sidewalk improvements, but community-driven, and tried to figure out with some public meetings where the best use of that funding would be. $100,000 isn't a lot for sidewalks, you all know that, but maybe it can make a difference somewhere. So, the five-year plan is 2024 to 2028, and again, here's what we had originally. Comments, just the typical types of projects: housing rehab, senior services, homeless prevention. And this shows just, the, the slide is just how the annual plan works, the years, and these are projects in the past, taken from the HUD site. So that's really what we're here for, is to have one more public hearing. The comment period ends on August 12th, and then we will submit the final consolidated plan for 2024-28, and the final 24-25 annual plan completed in IDIS, which is the HUD system, for HUD to approve before August 16th.
Okay. Any questions? We were briefed on this last night. Okay, thank you, Mr. Blair, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Item two, this is a, a public hearing. If there are any public comments on the Community Development Block Grant Program and the changes notated, we'll hear those at this time. Anyone on this side would like to speak on that? Are you sure? Anyone on this side? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Go ahead.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So this is no action, public, public comment period ends August 12th, and then you'll file it at that time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on the map? The, the areas that's marked color, that, that is the sites that qualify here, is that I correct?
The green, the green are, is the block groups, census block groups and tracts, they're considered low to moderate income, so things like sidewalks or cer, senior centers, things like that, public services are, sidewalks, roads, things like that, are eligible in those low mod areas. They wouldn't be in the areas that aren't in those green boxes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings this evening. At this time, we'll move to new business. Item three on the agenda, City Council will consider temporarily closing the following streets during the Walk to End Alzheimer's special event on Saturday, September 28th, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m., contingent upon meeting all requirements of the special events permit application process. The closures will be Front Street from Worth to Lexington Avenue, Worth Street from Front to Morehead Street, and Lexington Avenue from Morehead Street to Front Street. At this time, I'll recognize our Recreation Supervisor of Special Events, Sean Hicaviria. Sean, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Appreciate y'all having me here tonight. Tonight, I am here on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association's request for temporary street closure for their annual Walk to End Alzheimer's special event, which is scheduled to take place on Saturday, September 28th, from 9:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. I do want to point out one thing, I apologize for not catching it sooner. There is actually a street closure request that was left off the agenda. So if you're looking at a map of downtown, it's basically going to be a giant square around downtown. So Morehead Street would be included with that. Just to kind of walk through the route, they're going to start at the depot. They're going to head right onto Front Street, kind of going towards Danny's. They're going to hit Worth Street. They'll hang a left there, go all the way down to Morehead, hang a left on Morehead, meet out here on Lexington, and then back up Lexington to Front, and then end right back at the depot. It's a one-mile loop that the group will walk. They'll have about 600 participants.
So Beverly, please notate that change to the route to be sure that it's documented in a minute.
Thank you. And the event organizer is here with us tonight, Ms. Victoria Huggins. If you have any specific event-related questions that you'd like to direct towards her.
Thank you. And Sean has been marvelous to work with, my friend. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions about our proposed walk route?
Any questions? Can't get lost on that now.
Well, I would love on behalf of the Alzheimer's Association, North Carolinians chapter, to invite all of you, including you, Mr. Mayor, to attend as our special guests. I would love nothing more than a wonderful walk team from the Burlington City Council. It's free to register, but donations are tax deductible. We have over 211,000 North Carolinians who are living with this disease that are age 65 and older. That does not include those who are living with the disease who are under the age of 65 in our state. And over 12% of those North Carolinians are living here in Alamance County. So we do appreciate your support.
Thank you. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Any questions? If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion for the street closures as listed.
Certainly.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. It's all good. See you on September 28th.
Yes, sir.
At this time, we'll move into public comments. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Each speaker is asked to limit comments to five minutes. I think in looking, we've got Philip Keller, 411 Carnotl, about pedestrian plan bikeways. Was that the same?
It is, yes, sir. It was just especially to emphasize, I feel the need for a bikeways and pedestrian advisory commission like they have.
Duly noted. I would ask, Beverly, that you insert those under public comments as well, so we'll have those as a line item to address as we move forward. And thank you for your help with the crosswalk.
Yes.
Much appreciated. It took us a little bit of time, but we got that done.
Yes, well, I was glad to see you go in.
Yeah. That's very good. Next is Teresa Wiley on study of roadway deaths.
Actually, that was the wrong topic. It should be a different topic on the public comment. That's not on the agenda. If I can come over.
Yep.
So I just wanted to, for item H, in regards to the budget amendment 2025-4, in regards to the two motorcycles utilizing the controlled substance fund, I just wanted to make the comment that I know that this is, the $5,000 that was budgeted for controlled substance that the city of Burlington has chosen to use it for motorcycle, but the purchase of two motorcycles. But I did bring this up even with the county commissioner and with Ashley Barber around the opioid settlement. In neither budgets, there are not item, line items that are budgeted for family support and how to support individuals that are in recovery, nor is there an item line around grief.
Nor is there an item line around victims.
Exactly. And so when we think about the utilization of the funds, whether it's the opioid funds or whether it's controlled substance funds, if we can really take a moment and be community-driven as, such as the community block grant was, really making choices and decisions about what matters to our community, that is what creates the trust and the belief in us as citizens and the decisions and the guidance that come from you guys. And so I know that, you know, for whatever reason, I trust that we need two motorcycles, but if we can really use the controlled substance on something that matters to the community, which is families need to know how to support victims or those that are struggling with substance abuse, that requires a lifestyle change. What we have realized, and I'm working with the state, is how do you groom and educate families in how to support those victims? And two, how do we break and treat the cycle of grief for those that are suffering from this here in Alamance? So I just challenge and ask that we reconsider the use of those dollars.
Thank you. That does conclude our public comments this evening. So our public comment session will now be closed. We'll move into city council comments. I do have a note here, and I'm glad it was brought to my attention. We're pleased to announce that Burlington will be hosting the USA Softball Senior National Championships. Is that this week?
Yes, sir. It starts tomorrow.
Starts tomorrow. So this is a very prestigious event. It brings together about just a little shy of 80 teams from across the nation with men's and women's divisions. And pretty talented to see those athletes 50 and up. I will not be participating. But that's, that is, so that's Wednesday through, Saturday through Sunday? Okay.
But the mayor's saying he's never been that 50 years old, so he's not eligible.
Yeah, I'm not eligible yet. That's right. So we'll be all in City Park, four at Springwood, and the two fields at Medbin. So that's like old times, what used to be every night of the week.
Exactly right. The 70s and 80s, we actually have 80-year-old teams playing. So 70s and 80s will start Wednesday, tomorrow, they'll play Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And then the 50s and 60s come in on Friday, and they play Friday and Saturday, so.
Okay.
So the orthopedic wing of the hospital could be very busy the rest of the week. It could be like that.
Okay, so that's a great event. I would like to thank city staff too for their efforts with the Western Electric, kind of the open house project that we had a few weeks ago. We got a little bit of a briefing last night from Nathan Edwards and the U.S. Army on the Restoration Advisory Boards. We have come light years with regards to the cleanup for Western Electric, and it's taken a lot of people, a lot of time, and a lot of energy across a pretty creative landscape of pulling people together. And I think the culmination of all of that is the interim cleanup phase is going on and still under process to some degree. And the final cleanup phase will be announced at some point once everything is complete. But in the interim, it's the Restoration Advisory Boards. It's really going to be transparent and allow the community to provide input. It's going to be led by the U.S. Army. I will tell you, the event that we had at Fairchild was, Nathan told me it would be the new model for how those events are put together moving forward. So city staff has really done a tremendous job, and the amount of effort that it's taken to get it this far is almost indescribable. But the tenacity of our staff and those involved have been really important. And this Restoration Advisory Board, I think we had, we got 50 signed up, and we haven't really even kicked it off yet. So it's going to be pretty big. And that'll be really the next phase for community engagement. And then I think this is Todd Lambert. Todd, is this your last meeting?
Yes.
You can come back anytime you want to. We'll get you a seat on the front row. So Todd's leaving us to pursue other endeavors, and we're going to miss him greatly. And we appreciate all of your help in allowing us to lean on you for all of this time. We greatly appreciate. We're going to miss you. So any other council comments? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I'd ask you to vote to go to close session at this time, 41:43, 31811. Full discussion about the location expansion of the district, including the agreement on tentative list of that on development centers that may be offered in the area.
So we have a request for close session by our city attorney. Is there a motion to enter into close session?
Go move.
We have the motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So at this time, we'll enter into close session. Wrong, I tried to.